Start the recording. Um, okay, first I am on the agenda is acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. Gail, I think all we have is the email I think I posted from Paul Orlando. Anything else?
Hi. I believe there was one public hearing notice that was also posted to SharePoint.
That's right. I think Sue, you posted something today.
Well, I posted it a while, a while ago. Oh, the public, yes, the email was posted a while ago. I thought I posted the notice, but that was posted earlier today.
Okay, with no public online, I will dispense with that item.
Ron, this is Mary.
Yes, Mary.
Can I address Paul Orlando's email for a minute?
Okay, briefly.
Well, it, it, it looks like there's still an ongoing issue with this Sir Village property and Mr. Karpowicz. And I'm just wondering what recourse or what scope the planning board has with that.
Yeah, so Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we've now passed it off to the enforcement officer. And he is dealing with Mr. Karpowicz. And I think it's out of our jurisdiction now. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sue.
No, you're correct. The enforcement officer has, is the enforcer of zoning bylaws, including decisions, so.
Okay, and does he also do the stormwater management?
He's out there to make sure that the plans and that we approved are followed. I assume that would include that.
Okay, I was just checking because prior he was not doing that, so he must be taking that on now.
Either that, or we could have the, does the DPW weigh in on that, Sue, or?
I think the short answer is the building enforcement officer is the one that handles enforcement. So whatever needs to be reviewed or needs to be addressed, that would be in his court.
I, I have asked Paul to keep us informed on anything going on with that, just as a courtesy. I know a couple of members were interested, so, and he has been doing that, so.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Next item is the MAHT update. Chris, any update news since town? Well, you can, I guess, report on town meeting and.
I can report on town meeting. The, the town meeting voted to endorse the Housing Trust and Housing Authorities Initiative to renovate and consider expansion of affordable housing units in various locations in town. The Affordable Housing Trust hasn't met since then, so I'm assuming we're gonna move ahead and start seeking proposals from developers in the new year, but that's all that's happened so far.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any questions from the board on the housing? Okay, thanks, Chris. The public hearing is scheduled for seven, so I'm gonna jump down to the Summer Street Common Drive. But I will tell you on the public hearing, in, not that everyone get their hopes up, but I, it's going, we're gonna open the public hearing and continue it to January, our January 10th meeting. So not gonna be much there if anybody from the public's waiting to hear on that. So with that in mind, I'd like to move on to the, I have listed as 208 Summer Street Common Drive. An informal discussion presented by Deb Colbert, who I believe is with Weston and Sampson?
Hancock Associates.
Hancock Associates, okay. All right, and Deb, if you can begin, would you need to have these? Did you wanna have the ability to show your screen?
Yes, please.
And am I correct, is it 208 Summer Street, or is it 216?
It's kind of zero Summer Street because it's a vacant lot that has, does not have an address attached to it as of yet.
Okay.
We, we've gone back and forth with the Health Department because we've had to go out there to do soil testing. And it's not to a way, it originally was attached to 216. And I don't know if you can see my plan. Everyone's my plan. So Mr. McDougal is 210. His son is 212. And down here is 216 that goes up behind. And so, so the property abuts the railroad tracks. Is everyone familiar with the property?
Is there a marshland in between the potential driveway and the railroad tracks?
Yes, yep. So I'll run through it with you. So the railroad tracks crosses 127. And just as you cross 127, Causeway Brook runs under 127 and under the railroad tracks. And that's this thick blue line here. And then, um, all of this is marshland up until this line here, which is green. Let's see if I can zoom in just ever so slightly. So this is the vegetated, the bordering vegetated wetlands. So we have two wetland resource areas that are on the property. So that's why all the properties are pushed over to the right or east of the property. The common drive is less than 500 feet. It goes right to between lots two and three. And we went, we've gone out and done soil testing for the three lots. And we were able to perk and find soils for septic out here, lot three. And then we were able to find septic for lot one outside of the 100-foot buffer. According to the Manchester Board of Health, the requirement is to put in your septic system outside of the 100-foot buffer zone where the Title V regulations is outside of 50 feet from the bordering vegetated wetlands. And with the Board of Health in Fox, in Manchester, if you cannot find perccable material outside the 100-foot, you would need to go to the Board of Health and ask for a variance in order to be between the 50 and the 100. And so we were able to perk between the 50 and 100 where we would match Title V. And more than likely, we would design something that is an innovative and alternative design for septic. But the big thing is, the, the most important point is that we were able to find perccable material for three lots. And that's why we're before you because the building department, the, the building inspector with your permission has the authority to grant a special permit for a common drive for two lots. And we are asking for a special permit for three lots. We did write to the fire department and he gave us state code for roads. And we meet most of those requirements for fire truck, fire truck access for roadways. But I also want to point out that it is a common drive. And we meet all the regulations requirements for the specifications for common drive in your regulations. And we meet all the dimensional requirements in zoning. So we would not be asking for variances or waivers beyond the common drive. The concept, go ahead.
But no, go ahead. I, when.
We did reach out to the Conservation Commission, the agent, Chris Bertoni, and she did get back to us. Her concerns were that on the plan, I didn't show the 30-foot no disturb zone, which is in between this green line, this thick green line and the first dashed line. But none of our, none of the project is going to be within that, that setback. But I definitely can add it as part of the actual application. Another question that she had was over here to the east of the property, there is a 200-foot vernal pool buffer zone, which is not a certified vernal pool. And if it were a certified vernal pool, then we would need to go out and locate the vernal pool and walk the property at a certain time of the year. But it is not a certified vernal pool. And therefore, we're showing the buffer zones to the potential vernal pool of 100-foot and the 200-foot. And of course, when we get down into the details of the design, we would definitely need to verify those buffer zones to make sure that we are still outside of those limits. And who else responded? The town engineer for, for water line said that the water in Summer Street is sufficient to handle the three additional homes. And that we would be responsible, of course, for bringing the water in from Summer Street and providing fire hydrants at the end, which would be part of the design, of course. And I think that's it.
All right, thanks, Deb. I've had Gary Gilbert usually pre-vet some of these, these types of applications. And I'll start with Gary with any questions.
All right, thanks. Have you subdivided these lots and where's the frontage?
We haven't subdivided yet, however, we're proposed to subdivide. And there would be frontage along Summer Street. We met with Paul Donahue and talked with him in regards to accessibility to, to lots where you will not, you will not be able to be able to access from the frontage. He gave us what the setbacks were.
Excuse me, who's Paul Donahue?
Your building inspector?
Oh, Paul Orlando.
Paul Orlando, sorry.
Okay, what's the required frontage? Could you refresh my memory in this neighborhood? What, how much frontage do you have on Summer Street?
Yep, so the required frontage is 150 feet for each lot. And each lot, I don't know if you can see this, I'll zoom in.
I can see it.
So each lot has well over the 150 feet. 300 feet, 276.
I get it. Can you go back to the site, the larger image inside plan?
The other, the other portion of this that's always tricky with, with these lots is the lot width. And the lot width is requirement, the requirement is that 80% of the required lot, which would be 36,000, because the required lot is one acre or 40,000, must have a lot width of 125 feet parallel with the frontage. So what we did was we went back.
Can I interrupt you there? I think we don't want to go down a rabbit hole for.
Okay.
This is preliminary and you want some initial feedback.
Yes, sorry.
And there's a lot of case law that this, this sort of interfaces with. And you need to have, you need to have frontage, but it has to be accessible frontage. It has to be practical, not illusionary. And there is a case law about someone having frontage on a seasonal marsh area where they were allowed to do their, their subdivision of land. But you've got an actual riverfront as part of your frontage. I, I'll, I'll give you my take on it right away is this, this frontage, from my viewpoint at this point anyhow, doesn't look adequate to provide access to each of the lots. I know that there is, it can be alternative ways to get there. You can get a common driveway in, or once upon a time, you were, somebody was trying to access these from Ancient County Way or another road. But the, the case law on, on A and Rs is that you have to have practical access from your frontage. You may not actually use it as a way to get to your building site, but it has to be practical. It can't be a cliff, for example, or it can't be a year-round pond stream or, or marshland. I think that's a big stumbling block right here. How can you respond to that?
My response is your actual bylaw for common drives is that.
It's about common driveways, it's about subdividing the land into different laws.
Yep, yep. And, you know, we want to be able to access the property in the back. And you're right, we cannot access through a, a brook or a river. And that's why we're asking for the common drive.
And you make it a road?
My take on it is it would be overturned in a lawsuit in three seconds if the, if the frontage is not, is not practical access to the building portions of the lot. Otherwise, you know, it turns the law on its head. That's my take on it. That, that act, that, that frontage you got is not adequate for access, the way I see it. Certainly it is for one lot, but not for three lots.
So, Ron. So I think that the, I think I would agree with Gary that the, you're not entitled to the approval not required for the division of this land, to put it a different way. Because access is not over your frontage in any practical way. That means, at least as I read it, that you would have to come before us with a subdivision control, sub, under the subdivision control law, which is a different process. And then, and different criteria, which I don't have in front of me. And potentially, your frontage might remain where it is, but at least then the access is governed by the rules of the subdivision control law, as is then comment, the public comment process and so forth. I think that's the way I see it, is that this is not an A and R plan.
Sarah, the, if they created a subdivision road, they would then be creating frontage on the subdivision road. So that would be a different frontage.
Yeah.
Ignore Summer Street, you create new frontage and you'd have to build that road, that common driveway as a subdivision road with the proper turnaround and the widths and all the, you know, it's very, very clearly spelled out in the law. And you're probably already aware of it, being engineers, you do a lot of work around here.
Yeah.
That, to me, I agree with Sarah. I mean, the, the way to do this is to create a subdivision road. I can't see any other way to do it.
At least for the two back lots, the front lot arguably would have, but that's. You're, yeah.
Right, and the, the, the front lot has, the front lot has 300 feet of frontage where we could access and get 200, we could get two lots. And we're just asking for the third lot on here. So the, again, the means and methods of going about this, you know, our goal and our hope would be to be able to access the properties in the back through a special permit with you, but I'm not quite sure if there's another means and methods.
But you don't have three lots. That's the problem. You have one lot right now. So your first thing you have to figure out is dividing the lots. And so there are two ways to do that. One is with a approval not required. And I think I agree with Gary that this is not, does not meet the case law for access over the frontage from approval not required. So, and the second way is through a subdivision, which is a different set of regulations. And you're gonna have to look at them and figure out a way to proceed that way. But, but it's not about accessing the lots because right now you have one lot. So you're using two things. There's dividing the lot into three and providing access to each of those three, particularly those two back lots. And, and it's our opinion that, or at least my opinion, that it's not an approval not required.
I, I totally agree, Sarah. With 300 feet, you could get two lots there because there is practical access. There's a, there's a term called vital access standard, and that's sort of what I'm focusing on. You could get two lots of frontage on Summer Street with vital access off of Summer Street. But you wouldn't be able to get the third lot without the subdivision. That's, I guess, our combined take.
Just, just before, just to make sure, we get any other comments, Chris or Mary, on, on this? Are you in agreement?
Yeah. This is Mary. I had a couple of comments I agree about. I was, I couldn't quite see having frontage with, through marshland, wetlands, stream. I was also confused trying to do some research on this because the book and page does go to 216 Summer Street. So I don't know if two lots are connected, the one further down in this one. But one question is, what, I don't recall you saying the exact length of the common driveway.
Hey, I'm sorry. What, what link are you asking about?
What the common driveway is, the proposed link?
Proposed link?
No, length, length of it.
Oh, length, right. According to your, your zoning bylaw of 6.2, I believe it's 6.28, the, the maximum length of a common drive is 500 feet.
Correct, but what's your proposed common driveway length?
489 or something, to right here.
And you had to cut it off at a certain point to, to meet that?
Yeah, because we need, we wanted to meet, we wanted to meet your requirement of 500 feet.
But you couldn't get to the back lot without a common driveway, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I think that's an issue.
So you're adding a drive, sorry for interrupting you, Mary, but adding a driveway onto a common driveway to extend the access.
Right, so the common driveway is for, is for access to all three lots. The common driveway ends, and then at the very end of the common driveway is a non-common driveway, is the driveway to the back lot.
And is that a truck turnaround in the back there for?
Yes, yep, yep.
For what it's worth, I would add that there's a lot of common driveways in our town. And there's a lot of precedent for it. There's a lot of sound reasons to allow it. It, it disturbs less land, you know, you have, you maintain the maximum amount of pervious surface, et cetera. I don't see a, a three-lot common driveway as being the hugest stumbling block. We've got plenty of precedent for it. And that's something we would discuss and, you know, at our discretion, allow, allow a special permit. But the real big issue here is how do you, how do you actually subdivide the land? That's the one to focus on first.
So continuing on with the common driveway. So how, I guess I've just never seen and, and no expert by any means, but a common driveway and then a driveway on top of a common driveway, is that common?
Normally, common driveways go to a certain point. And, and everyone has covenants and use in place to maintain that common driveway and responsibilities for that common driveway. And then after the common driveway ends, then it is the responsibility of that homeowner to put in their driveway. And there are rules and regulations in regards to the length of regular driveways and slopes and whatnot. The fire department just requested that at the end, somewhere at the end, there is adequate turnaround for the, his fire truck. And so we have this 50-foot turnaround for access for him to come to the end, turn around and leave.
May I interrupt Mary and Deb just for a second? What is this, what is the slope on, on this road, by the way?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about the topography.
Yep, so the maximum slope is 9% up until this turnaround, then it's at 10%. And your common driveway requirements request that no, the slope be no greater than 10% for the whole length of the driveway.
And if it was a road, a subdivision road?
And, and then slopes can be greater than 10%.
Sorry, Mary, you can go ahead. Are you?
No, I just, I wanted to get a general feel for the topography of the, the land and the limitations there. But if people want to move on, that's fine.
Yeah, I just wanna, Chris, anything on your end?
Just, just to be clear, because I know in the past with decisions, and I believe it was the same property. If this is 216, there was decision in 2015 and then another decision in 2019. And they did discuss concerns about the flow of water on the site.
This is not, so this is not the same property. 216 is over to the east of it. And the decision back in regards to Ocean County Way was that the owner, the Harveys, wanted to extend Ocean County Way so that the dead end at Ocean County Way was longer than 500 feet. I think it was already longer than 500, and they wanted to extend it further in order to provide frontage for 216 up there. And the board strongly suggested the answer was going to be no. And so they removed, they, we re, what did we do?
Withdraw with that.
Drew without, right, right. Because the actual frontage for the 12 Plum Hill Road was off of Summer Street.
Yeah, that was in 2019, but there was also one in 2015. And we don't need to go down all this, but just, there was concern with water.
Yeah. So I mean, as I read Manchester zoning bylaws in regards to the common drive, it states that the permission by, of the building inspector and planning board, common drives may be used to access lots with frontage considered by the building inspector to be inadequate. No more than two lots shall be served by a common driveway without a special permit from the planning board. And that is the, that is from your regulations that, that we are trying to discuss here. Well, I understand that A and Rs are, is not something that we'd be doing. It would be a special permit and then we would be subdividing.
Understood, understood. Just, just to round out the board, Chris, any, any additional comments or concerns?
Oh, I, I just have some advice, which is to get a, a good real estate attorney to give you an opinion as to how this is gonna work. My general view is that this looks like a two-lots answer that's trying to be turned into a three-lot answer. And I'm, I'm not sure what the economics of this are, but something tells me that the cost of the infrastructure for three lots would be significantly reduced for just two lots and probably be a much more efficient use of the land as well. And it might be a lot easier to, to It might be a lot easier to to uh create an A and R and save a lot of permitting. That may not be needed. So that's just, you know, this is just an informal discussion at early stages, but. I think certainly getting legal advice would be very helpful at this stage.
Yeah, so uh, yeah, Deb, I think you've got the uh kind of a feel for the how the planning board feels, I um. I don't know if any additional comments from the board, um.
I have one other one, um, I'm not sure what you were inferring earlier uh when you spoke, but. Uh, the sequence of this would be that the lots need to be. Um, would, to my mind anyhow, the lots would need to be approved first before we would. I I would wanna see us making any decision about a common driveway. The chicken comes before the egg or something like that.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. You, we don't have a common driveway until you have lots. The the while our zoning says the common driveways can be used to access the lots, it doesn't supersede case law for and um. For for A and Rs, you and it's protecting yourself. As Gary said, um, the other thing is, Ron, just this is. Presented to us as a common driveway application, but this is not a common driveway application. This is a, this is a presented as an A and R. Um, and so anybody, this is not properly even for our advice. Um, it should be reflected, at least in the minutes, as a discussion of an A and R, and um we should, we would. Wanna make sure that any future agendas. Even if you wanna come back for more advice, reflect that the first, this is the division of this land first.
Yeah, well spoken, well taken, um. Deb, do you have any other questions or any comments? Do you think? You've got an idea where, which direction the board is leaning?
I I can definitely sense which direction the board is leaning, um, unfortunately, um. And we will. Get the advice of a legal attorney and uh real estate attorney and get back to you. Um, one question I I did not follow, though, um, is getting. Plans approved prior to. Applying for the special permit for the common drive, um. Instead, uh, in in my opinion. Getting plans fully approved would be a very expensive process if. We come back and we cannot get the common driveway approved. Um, I definitely would advocate not in that direction to my client, um. Because there's, you know, more than, there's a lot of work involved in order to get a plan approved through going through. The Board of Health and going through the Conservation Commission and and um going through the entire design. You know, this is a concept plan, of course, and and we need to, um. It 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 financially, it's just not the direction that I would advise my client, um. So.
If I could just add a word to that.
Absolutely.
Um, if you, if you drew up a per- permissible. Subdivision of land, whether it's two lots or or three with a subdivision road and brought that in. Um, the planning board could could give a response to it, cause it, if it's an A and R, it's a slam dunk. It's the kind of thing you do in one meeting. Either you either um endorse it or you don't. Um, and you could discuss the common driveway in a preliminary manner at that point. That that's what's commonly done is what you're doing, but another go-around kind of thing. I I I believe you could deal with water issues. That's an engineering. Challenge, but I I'm sure you could deal with it. It's a question of expense and. Like um Chris said, there's a lot of grade here and a lot of expense and cutting and and grade, but. You you you're aware of all that.
Yes, fully aware.
A revised, a revised uh uh chat might might be worthwhile, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, so you're, if you come in with three lots in a subdivision, you're gonna have to have a stormwater, a harder look at stormwater. Um, it's gonna be because of these slopes and um the wetlands and so forth. So that, if you if you look at our subdivision by uh control by law. There's a whole section on design review and um plan and and service water discharges and so forth. So um you're gonna have to assess whether that. Uh, and you're right, that's gonna be more expensive, and you have a public hearing process and so forth, um. I would say that if it's three lots and it looks like it's never gonna be more than that, we might. Uh, we, I don't know how Manchester has done in the past. In the prior town I worked in, you know, this might be a lesser road. That woke more like a common driveway potentially, but that requires variances. Subdivision control, which are appealable, so. Um. You have to think about that. Um. Even if they're all done in good faith, um. The right reasons, you know, you know. So, um, but I I just don't see this as an A and R, it's a subdivision, if if you want three lots.
And how much more difficult, Deb, is it to make it a road?
Uh, you know, it's more engineering work, um, and and more costly, but yeah, I mean. We could, you know, we, the problem, you know, the the issue with the subdivision road is just, you know. What waivers are we gonna be asking for so that we can build a subdivision road that's not? To all the requirements that that the town requires, so um we can definitely look at it, I'm. I I was able to make three lots work, but again, it's, so it's the cart before the horse, I I. Um. So I I don't fully understand that, I, you know. You need the common drive in order to get the three lots, but. You, in order to get the three lots, you have to get the A and R, and you can't get the A and R because you. Don't meet the requirements, so therefore you need the common drive.
We legally can't grant a permit for a common driveway for three lots unless they exist. I mean, that's not, you can't do that. That's just law, but.
Yep, so we come in with an A and R plan that shows three lots and all the mathematics behind it. And then we would ask for the common. We would ask for the common drive after that. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but the the lots as shown do not act, have any practical access to of them. Over their frontage, so it is not a qualified, A and R is. Frontage and area. Right, which has to provide practical access in some way, whether you elect to use it or not is another matter. But I I don't see this as drawn with what we know, that to the, to of the lots. As drawn would be A and Rs. I think you can get two lots. You don't need the entire frontage to be. Passable. You need some portion of the frontage to be passable, so you have three hundred feet. There, or how, uh, whatever, hundred feet, that's possible, you could effectively come in with two driveways. Thank.
Right, and so that goes back to um. Your co- your common lo- your common dr- uh, we're just going around in circles.
Then you come in and say, and in lieu of building two driveways, we would like to build to our two lots. We'd like to build the common driveway.
Yeah.
That would work.
To two lots.
All right, I think. I think we've got a good preliminary hearing, Deb, but I think you've got some ideas to kick around and uh. You know, get back to your drawing board and we'll uh.
Yes, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it that you fit me in. It's a crazy week and um and we will, we'll be back before you, before you know it.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Deb.
Yeah, bye.
Okay, um, so I'd like to um at this time go back to the public hearing on the Cornerstone Church. And I'd like to open the uh public hea- the continuation of the public hearing on Cornerstone Church. And Gail tells me that I need to take a roll call vote to open the public hearing. So I will take a roll call vote to open the public hearing on the Cornerstone Church, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Alny?
Yes.
Okay, we've opened the uh public hearing, um, that was duly noted in the cricket, um. As described before, and I have a email from um Mr. Alton. I think that's his first name, but um to request to continue. The public hearing to our January tenth meeting. He, uh, they were not able to get the plans together um in time. Um, I informed him that I thought it would be better that um we meet in January as several board members. Might are having issues with our December thirteenth meeting, so I thought that would be in everyone's best interest. To move it to January, which he has agreed. Um, I know Laura's working, we have a bunch of questions out there in one of, in the uh Cornerstone Church file that I hope everybody's uh. Contributing to, so with that in mind, I would like to take a roll call vote to continue the. Public hearing on Cornerstone Church to January tenth. Ms. Ms. Creighton?
I mean, say, yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Alny?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
And Ron, you just have to say, at what time?
And it will be at seven P M on January tenth, I do so. Everything okay, Gail? Did that correctly?
Perfect.
Okay.
Got it.
All right, next item, um, is the planning board and planning department budgets, um. Sarah and I and Sue had a meeting on uh with Sue on her capital budgets for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Um, I think so, if you wanted to put on screen or just describe, um. Your, um, did you want to put on screen or just describe your, okay? So, um, your, um, what you have put in for uh um budgets. On the parking strategic plan and all that business.
Yeah, so I'm typically I do out a five-year plan. I got, I'm only out to three years. Um, these are a continuation of items that I've had on in the past. It includes a um twenty thousand for um a parking study to be a match. Um. At this point, a match for an M A T C study um for this year. Um, then there's a seventy-five thousand dollars for a strategic plan for. Um, a downtown strategic plan for um twenty twenty-three. And then following that with, I think it was ten thousand dollars for um zoning. That um might take place to help implement the strategic plan, so. Thinking about, you do a plan and then you might need to change the zoning in response to that plan. So those are the three items that I have um for the five-year capital plan at this point, and I'd be happy to. To take input and to see if there are other planning items out there that. Um, that the board would like to recommend in the five-year capital plan.
I'll take comments from the board on that, um, I'll start with Mary.
Thanks, Rania. I'm speaking on behalf of um Christine Delicio. She had put forth, um. A parking study request, um, she had sent. To Ron, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's, I I think it was late today. I don't think it's in the folder, um, but anyway, she put together a request. That um took in data from other communities and what they did, um, so she has a chart and it shows. Roughly how much uh the parking studies were for and. Saying that the the request would be a um fifty thousand for a parking study to include neighborhoods that will be impacted. Expanded with redevelopment, um potentially Pine and Pleasant Street as a start additionally. Eight of alternatives such as a parking lot near the train station or a um PPP with the schools, um. I know as long as I've been on the board, we've been pushing for a, so that's four, four years, we've been pushing for a parking study. Um, and we've been waiting on M A P C funding for for four years, so. It's with the hopes to advance. Um, and request this money regardless of what's happening with the M A P C study that can happen in tandem. Um. Christine did point out that the limited commercial district study was to be advanced based on. The fact that an M A P S P C parking study had been complete, so um I think it's. Best practices to put in for this fifty thousand, um, you know what, if we get the M A P C funding and we have too much funding, we can always say we don't need it. But um. We've waited on the M A P C for four years and it's. Always um at the, it it it's never occurred, so I think um. It would benefit the planning board and the town to have this type of study. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Okay, um, Mr. Gilbert, any comments on the studies presented or your own?
Could I ask where the fifty thousand dollar na- number came from? I guess it's a question from Mary, I guess.
Yeah, so she has um one, two, three, four, five, six towns and what they paid. Um, and so they all hover around the fifty to sixty thousand range. That's where that came from.
Do you know this, uh, I mean. You know, uh, yeah, yeah, even an idea of the scope.
Um, so I think it's, um. Some are more comprehensive than others, um, some focus on historic downtown areas, some. Um, are are wider scope um throughout town. Um, I think these are the, um. Some of the towns like Winchester and Beverly obviously are much bigger, so ours would not be, you know. I would make the assumption that ours would be. Smaller, less money, less scope.
Yeah, okay, then I have a question for Sue, um, uh. How much is, what would we learn from a parking study? How much is there a need for a parking study and where would it be focused?
And the scope that I've um worked with over the last um three years. Is to concentrate on the downtown, basically running from. Town Hall or from Pine Street um up to Union Down Beach and up. Um, one twenty-seven to to kind of C Street, so that what we generally can think of as downtown parking. It would, the scope would look at the um, the parking lots at Masconoma at Beach Street at. Um, up on Norwood um as um. As part of that, but it, you wouldn't um count all the need to study on-street parking or any other parking along those routes. But just looking at those as possible strategies for parking management. So what I would hope to get out of a parking study is first to, to really look at, to see what utilization rates are. To see, first of all, to do an actual account of how many um spaces there are and then get some real data about how they're used. Whether they're all used all the time, whether there are some spots that are used regularly or. Do we really have a parking problem or is it more perception? Um, so I think we need to start with the data, and then from that, we can either get recommendations to. Change how we're managing parking or to create more parking or, um.
I I think so, you'll find that the data exists on how many parking spots we have.
It doesn't, not not that I've been able to found, so there's a pretty, um, um. Formatted scope of how to do that, and I don't believe that it has been done here. I mean, there's been. Traffic counts and there's been, you know, we might know how many are in different lots or we might, but I don't think a comprehensive. I have not found it, if you, if you wanna pass it on. but I don't think a comprehensive, I have not found it, if you, if you wanna pass it on, that's good. But I know a utilization count has not been done, which basically the consultant numbers every lot, every spot within that um, scope area, within the area, the project area. And then every hour on the hour, they document um, whether there is a vehicle in it and if it's the same or a different vehicle, so they know that the turnover rate um, is over a basically from like seven in the morning till seven at night, um, say, on a typical, on a typical day. So that's the common way to do a utilization, to know if it's turning over or if it's not, and to assess and see if we have the right parking management strategies in place.
So these are public, are these, are these public and private spots?
I'm primarily public, available to They would look at private spots if there's an opportunity to share, for shared parking or things like that, but principally for for the public spots that are available to the public.
Ron, that, that um, parking study group that you were on, I think there's some good documents from there.
I think we do, and I I I'm gonna try to get that soon, see if I can get you that. I'm asking right now. Okay, yeah, Gary, you finished, I can move on to uh, Sarah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Um, I wanna, I, I'm trying to understand the outcomes. Um, it seems like we have a lot of studies without clear outcomes in my, in my limited time here, so um, so I would like to see at least our portion of the planner's budget and work be more outcome oriented, and so a parking study with out specific outcome, you know, needs to have really clear outcomes. And maybe uh, utilization with recommendations for turnover or something uh, or revenue generation or other thing, you know, what are the, what are the options for um, parking maybe are the outcomes in that case? And in that, and then um, so that's, and then the downtown study to me, um, I understand that there may be a downtown strategic planning needed for sure, but I wanna know what the outcomes are. Um, that's next year's, but I think we have to think carefully about it, so we get things that are actionable. Um, rather than um, just uh, goal-oriented. So I'd like to see us have very um, actionable and I do think that in Manchester, that has to have a very board-driven process that can't be just from consultants. Um, and at least on a downtown study, I would say that M A P C has not uh, impressed me in their vision. So uh, maybe seventy-five thousand dollars is the right amount and, and I'd like to see us discuss what, how we, how we get a visionary but actionable kind of thing. Um, and then the third question I have is parking or downtown vision, at least parking, is it our, is it the planning board's domain? I, I don't, I thought, I'm not clear in my mind. So um, it may well be in Sue's domain, which is different than I think, I I I'm, I'm not sure how that fits, so um, those are my three comments that don't add a lot of what we do next to the discussion, I'm sorry about that.
It's good comments, um, okay, thanks Sarah and uh, Chris, sorry, put you at the end again, but you have any thoughts on that, parking or studies?
Sorry, I could, I was having trouble on muting, I thought Sarah had uh, a couple of really interesting thoughts there. It seems to me that there are two, we can, uh, it's easy to get two issues confused. And one of them is just trying to figure out what the parking problem is, and then once you find out what the problem is, how do you fix it? So I think really we're talking about two pieces of work here. And one of them is probably for the whole town, I'd love to be able to point to a document that says, hey, there the whole town has got plenty of parking, except for a few areas, and the areas might be around the high school during um, when the school's in session, it might be around Seeing Beach for five weekends out of the summer. Uh, and so that would be pretty easy to probably fix without too much trouble. But I'd like to know what those, where those places are, so we can at least all agree on them and not get into these discussions about what's happening out in the neighborhoods all the time. Uh, not to diss the neighborhoods, but I just never have seen parking issues in the neighborhoods and, because I just drive through them occasionally. But then, once we figure out, especially the downtown's gonna be a big hot button and the outcome there is gonna be a parking management plan, how to, how to solve this by doing whatever, acquiring more land or building a parking ramp or or just uh, having a sticker program or getting the merchants to park somewhere else and taking a bus into, I don't know, there's gonna be something, it's gonna work. But uh, so I I think this should be broken into two pieces, and maybe not even by the same consultant. And I think the first piece really would be the planning board's perusal, because it involves the whole downtown, who else is gonna do it? Uh, the second one, I think we'd have to coordinate if we're going to, if it's gonna be the downtown. Then we gotta coordinate with the, certainly the, the, the DIP, the Downtown Improvement Plan and bring them into it, cause sure they have a lot to say. And probably the Chamber of Commerce and a bunch of other organizations as well, but I don't think we can get there until we figure out where the problems are and then we can focus on. But we've, you know, we spent all this time just talking about parking as places where we need to do studies. And I, you know, maybe there are other things we might wanna pick up as well.
Yeah, that's the next topic, I I um, yeah, I agree, uh, Chris. Uh, and um, I think maybe it's time to maybe look at, at one of these other consultants um, to get involved. Uh, I think limiting it to downtown would be, is a good idea, having a clear and concise scope and what the outcome is. And uh, I think all those things mentioned are, are well-thought and well-meaning and I think good ideas. So um, I know Sue, are you um, already budgeting with this uh, match, M A P C match in mind, or um, are you open to, you know, if we wanted to look off, off of M, M A P C and go with our own money?
You have your own money?
Well, go with the town's money instead of a match and spend fifty grand?
You can ask, I don't, I'm not um, I'm not married to any particular consultants, I always try to um, be as sensitive to the town's um, request to keep our budgets reasonable. So I'm always looking to leverage our funds and get the most that we can for um, without paying a taxpayer dollars. But if it, if there, if people feel strongly, if this board feels strongly that um, the M A P C is not capable or is not a preferred consultant, um, I would kick it to the town to say, do you wanna spend twenty dollars for an M A P C? And here's the scope, or do you wanna spend fifty thousand or sixty thousand for a different consultant? And I think, uh, I think I know what the response might be, but I'm, I'm not for sure, and I
Have we seen this, have, have we seen the scope?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm happy to send it again, I'm happy to send it again, I haven't, and it's, when it's, when I give it to M A P C, it isn't a, it isn't a fleshed-out scope, it's a project description really, and then it's up to M A P C to work with us to say, okay, here's the scope and here's how we're going to do it. So just um, so that you know, I have had a discussion with them recently, as, as I said, I've been asking for three years, um, so I called them directly this year and said, do you have the capacity and what are we looking at? I have received a verbal response that they do have the capacity, um, that if the town can find twenty thousand dollars for a match and provide um, um, about six to eight or ten, um, she said, six to eight volunteers to assist with the um, the actual counting on two days um, that they could, that they would have the capacity to do this. I am also, so I, I have a verbal that, that we're on their list and that's my pretty confident, confident that we could get this done this year, and it would involve, um, we would do it, um, the counts twice, once in the spring on a typical beautiful spring day. Um, and then once in the summer so that they can compare the, the differences and um, and look at both of those because we have seasonal changes, so I think, um, so that is what, the twenty thousand is what I've put in my budget so far. And if it's the board's wish to, to ask for more, I would do that. I do also um, have a, a consultant that's must have got wind that we were looking for one and he said he would have a scope to me um, within a, by the, you know, by probably by next week, I'm guessing that that will come in in the fifty thousand dollar range similar to what Christina found with her consultants. Um, M A P C indicated that they thought this scope would be about sixty thousand dollars um, if we were to, if we were to look beyond their, their borders, so. Um, really, it's when we go with M A P C, often it's a matter of finances. Um, but I think it's up to us to um, to guide the process, I think they have capable um, um, services. And um, you know, if we're hands-on, I mean, counting cars is counting cars, um, this is not a real high-level um, visioning process, um, it's really looking at best practices. So if I were to spend my money somewhere, I would prefer to um, ask for more funding or a different consultant for a strategic plan, for a downtown strategic plan, that might be more visionary. Um, and let the parking study kind of answer some baseline questions for us. Um, I, I see that as more of a technical study, that's my thoughts. And Chris, they are two, two separate studies, yeah. Yes.
And, and when uh, with the M A P C, do they actually do it in-house or do they contract it out to?
No, usually when we get funding from M A P C, it's, we don't get funding, it's actually technical assistance.
But does that mean they have?
Yes, they use their staff, so they have, they have transportation staff, which is why we couldn't do it last year, cause their staff um, didn't have the capacity, but in hindsight, it wouldn't have been a good year under COVID um, anyway to do that, so.
Yep.
Um, I think this year we're, we'll be close enough back to a normal that it could give us some answers, and in particular, I think it's important, because if we're looking for incremental growth downtown, if we're looking for multifamily housing by right downtown, which we're required to do, I think it would be good to understand um, the parking um, the parking situation and it, it may affect how we um, how we develop zoning, our parking requirements, et cetera. So I think there's a lot of reasons to do it, um, and one is to collect the baseline data, so no, we so it can stop being a question.
Can I uh, ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gilbert.
Um, I'm not necessarily against the M A P C and the product they give us, and I see that they're good for dollar-wise. But could we get a copy, is it possible to ask from them um, apart, uh, to see a parking study they did for a small little teeny-tiny town in the excerpts of Boston that we could look at? I think that would be helpful, cause that way people might be able to judge them better and either appreciate them more or less. Um, I'm also for saving our tax dollars, um, it might be worth it to spend more money and have a different uh, company produce a of, a parking study, maybe we could ask another company, show us one of your studies for a small town. I mean, it might be worth looking at the product. Um, in the end, and you just mentioned it a tiny bit, Sue, um, it would inform our zoning, I, I, I think, uh, I think Sarah made a really good point, like how does this break down, in the end, what are we gonna come up with? We may wanna create zoning where we sort of force really heavy-handedly. Uh, if anybody wants to put multifamily housing downtown, they gotta build structured parking. We don't know how much to push that idea or not through zoning. Or if it comes to how successful we have these neighborhood, we have one neighborhood parking lot or maybe two in town. May, that's more of a selectman's decision, so some of it would be our Billy Wick, some would be the selectmen's, but I guess we need to know how much of an issue there is before we decide how hard to push uh, for those kind of products.
And M A P T sent me a study and I'm happy to post them, I even went online and looked at a couple, including Essex. Um, and whether it's done by um, you know, kind of a top-notch guys or M A P C. Um, honestly, they approached it very similarly, um, so but I'm happy to, I'm happy to put out the ones that I looked at, I, it's a quick, pretty easy search online to find parking studies. You'll find they look pretty sim- similar.
Are, are we under any, any time skip, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was just gonna, there, there was some questions about um, um, consultants to do this, the, the studies, um, most of the towns that are outlined in Christine's, one did M A P C, but the rest did um, um, Nelson Nyg- Nygird, um, and then also a lot of those senior parking experts have gone, moved on to Saint, Sand Tech. Um, so there are those firms and just my two cents, I, I think it is the point to kind of move out from M A P C on this and go to another consultant. I think we, we have been in the situation, you know, getting a verbal okay and then the funding falls through. So I would urge that the, the planning board does kind of push for this funding, and again, if it, if it falls out that we don't end up needing all of it, at least we, we have the funding if we wanna move forward with this.
Yeah, I think we have to have a compelling scope and compelling reasons to go before the finance committee and then get this thing pushed.
Do you know the date that that needs to happen, cause maybe we could do some?
I was, that was Yeah, that was my next question, actually, Mary, uh, Sue, what is, is there um, a timeframe on this?
Well, I think Greg mentioned, we, we're, we're in the, we start our process here, I will be meeting on the budget within, I think it's next week. I have a prelim and I have my, my meeting with Greg and Andrea. Um, they put together the budget and then give it to the, the finance committee, I think it's somewhat fluid and um, you know, I think the budget is January, I think, is that what, about sometime in January where they actually have to the finance committee makes their decision or recommendation to the board of selectmen of what to put forward, so there's some, there's some, there's some time.
Would the board be willing to come up with a general idea on this by our next meeting, uh, next month and move that forward to? Does that sound like a doable?
Well, I was gonna actually propose that we authorize Sue to um, advance twenty thousand dollars in the next year's budget, or not author, I don't think we, I don't think we need to auth, but that we support Sue's request for twenty thousand dollars for a parking study for downtown, um. As, I guess that's a motion, um, and then I'll say, how we use that money, I do think that, that we might wanna go out and put out an RFP and see what happens, we probably will find that our budget is insufficient, but for data gathering for parking counts, it does seem to me that M A P C is probably fine. Um, and, but my, my point was more, I'd like, I think it's hard for me anyway, at this moment, to put forward a recommendation one way or the other on a downtown study without a clearer vision of what that looks, what the act, what the work plant, work products are going to be. Um, I do understand that a parking study supports a downtown vision. It supports maybe some support for mission for um, merchants or growth in retail or more real estate offices, whatever we need. Um, uh, and that, recognize that's a private landlord's decision, um, or landlord's decision. Um, so I support the twenty thousand dollars for a parking study in the next year's budget. Um, and then would like to see a much, much more flushed-out year two, year three, year four, year five um, thoughtful um, outcome-driven thought about the next years.
Okay, um, I think Sue's going through with it, whether we, she gets authorization from us or not, is that correct, Sue, or? Okay, um, I think Sue's going through with it, whether we, she gets authorization from us or not. Is that correct, Sue, or?
No, no, I'm open, I'm open to the board's, um, recommendation.
All right. Is there a second on Sarah's motion?
Girl, I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to support Sue and twenty thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Discussion.
I'll just reiterate what I said earlier. I, I think people, uh, Mary and Christine were mentioning these other studies, other towns of dawn. That's a, that's valid information. I'd like to sort of see what a fifty thousand dollar study looks like versus a twenty thousand dollar study looks like, but to make a decision and maybe we want to request more. And there is something tangible that comes down the end of the pike on this. It would affect how we might craft zoning changes. If we want to see some mixture of uses or we want, we want to see different types of housing options in town, perhaps concentrated downtown. It's yet to be decided, but you can't really start discussing that unless you really are on solid ground as to what you're needing or.
Is it possible to do a smaller area if the, if we feel that a, um, study by some other air, or is it, or is the, I mean, it seems to me the downtown, downtown from seaside one to the train or something is a smaller area, which might make it less expensive and as a what-if. I, I don't know.
I think you've got to include most of the general district because anybody living near downtown is going to be very concerned about the general district. It's hard to get out, away from.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we spend the next couple of weeks looking at these studies that Sue's gonna post on our, uh, on her website or whatever on sharing point. And then the next meeting, we'll be ready to make a recommendation. That's what we're gonna do. And Sue can tell Greg in the meantime, we're waffling between twenty and fifty thousand dollars, but something's gonna happen.
I agree with that, Chris, and, and, um, I'm sure Christine can provide the, the fifty thousand dollar studies for people to look at.
Oh, great.
Oh, Sarah, would you mind having withdraw? Uh, it sounds like, well, I think we can still support Sue. Um, well, there's a motion that's been made and seconded. So I, I think, well, what I'm hearing is no one seems to be against, uh, the twenty thousand, but we want to do some more, uh, research on the other studies. So I don't see any harm in endorsing the twenty thousand and going forward with the motion unless someone objects.
No, we can always supersede it at the next meeting.
I think Sue is trying to say that she feels like asking for fifty thousand for a parking study is going to be a hard sell. Is that what you're trying, Sue's trying to say something, which is not.
I do, I do think it's a hard sell, but I'm not, I'm not against it. I, but I would, and, and I'm not against it, but I want people to understand that the twenty thousand from M A P C is a sixty thousand dollar study or a fifty thousand dollar study. It's not like they're the cheap alternative. It's just that by law, they are obliged to provide services to the community and then they do that in the form of technical assistance. So, um, they ask for some matching funds on some, um, on some programs. And this is one that would really help move us to the top of that, to the top of that list. But I just, I am, I will, um, I have a, a Nielsen, um, study and it looks nearly identical to the M A P study and I will send them to you for you to evaluate them. And then you can make the, the, um, point to, um, or I will try to make it a point for you if you so choose, that, um, you know, the fifty thousand is better than the twenty thousand. So, uh, again, my recommendation is that we proceed with the M A P C as this is really a technical formatted study. Um, but I, I want you to feel comfortable with it and I'm happy to provide you with some, um, some, um, studies to compare.
Okay, so on, on the motion that Sarah made to support Sue on the twenty thousand dollar ask, um, I think we've, uh, I'll take a roll call vote. We can always amend it as Chris said at another point, but I'll take a roll call vote to support Sue. And I'll start with, uh, Ms. Creighton.
Yeah.
Mr. Leecey, uh, Ms. Foley.
I'm gonna say no. I'm gonna say I don't, I don't have enough information of how, how a, um, M A P C is gonna compare with another consultant. And I don't want to be wedged into just going with M A P C because they match funds. So I'm gonna be a no.
Okay. One yes, one no, Mr. Gilbert.
The way I understand this vote, we're not voting to select M A P C specifically. And if that can be, if who we choose to do the study can be withheld until we, uh, I assume you would, uh, check with us before you decide who to select to do the study, Sue, or are we out of that equation?
My guess is that you will not be able to find an adequate, someone who would do it for twenty thousand. I could be wrong. Um,
But will you jump forward and engage them if we vote yes, is my question?
No, because it has to go to town meeting to get the money.
Yes, it has to go to town meeting. I, I would not, I would not select a consultant that this board unanimously or the majority of the board was against.
So I would vote, I would vote in favor then.
Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Only.
Yes, although yes.
Yes, and I'll support that also. So it's four to one. Okay, I think we've exhausted that. And, um, Chris, to your, uh, question earlier, any planning, any other studies besides this, uh, parking that the planning board would be interested in doing, um, you know, uh, anybody have any thoughts on that? I talked about it in my letter to you guys last week. Does anyone have any additional studies they would like to see?
So I have a study.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to propose a, a, a capital facilities location study. Um, there are a number of, uh, town, um, land uses that are in, inappropriate places at the moment, or maybe they are appropriate. And I think it'd be nice to have sort of, uh, a facilities plan that says, let's redo the D P W and put it somewhere else. Let's move the fire station out of downtown to a better location. These are things that are going to take twenty or thirty years to do, but until we have a location in mind, you know, maybe like, maybe the fire station should be out of the burn site instead of a pla- playing field. I don't know. I'm, you know, I just think there should be a global, uh, review of all these and, and a practical plan put together. Uh, you know, a twenty-year plan. And maybe it's already in the master plan, but I don't think it is.
Should have been. No, it's not. So there was a study done, um, by, uh, I, I sat in on a lot of those meetings, um, where, so I, I agree with you, Chris, that we, that the town needs to make some long-term decisions about this. I'm not sure that a consultant is, um, the right avenue. And I, I would liken it to the work of citing the regional high school. So we had consultants that came in, told us where to cite it. And until we uh, tried and failed, um, it, it didn't work, you know, it's, it's, the consultants can't kind of know and have to own it. That, that I think it's a, I think it's a board of selectmen thing personally, but I think we should participate and maybe we can push it along and, um, but I agree. So I think some of the data exists in that, I can't remember what the study was called. It was like a municipal facilities assessment. Um, one of the things that happened, this is my opinion and my memory, so forgive me. Um, well, Christine brought this up the other day where she said the fire chief said that we need, that they need five acres for fire station. So when you ask everybody what they need, you know, everybody needs five acres, which may or may not be what they really need. So, and the consultants kind of take it at face value. Um, so I agree, we need the work to, we need the plan. How we get there is we, meaning the town. How we get there is another matter.
Well, I, I think a consultant could say, you don't need five acres for a fire station. You need one acre for a fire station. This is how big the building should be and this is the kind of location you should be looking for to do it. And the same with D P W. D P W doesn't need five acres. It needs, I don't know, half an acre. I mean, I don't know what it needs.
Yeah.
But there are people who know this stuff and instead of asking the department heads what their wish list is, let's tell them what they can get.
Yes, go ahead, Mary.
Um, Chris, do you see this as, um, um, similar at least a bit in to what I had had, have said prior with kind of having a land inventory of town-owned properties and thus a strategic plan, how to use those. Um, those pieces of land.
Well, yeah, dovetail into that, but it may be the, the cheapest and best alternative for a citing something may not be on a piece of town-owned land. And maybe there's pieces of town-owned land that are better used for other things than fire stations or.
Right, but this would be, I mean, that would be a subset of.
It would be, oh yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Because I think we should, you, you know, at least the, the, the land inventory, you know, we wouldn't need a consultant for that. We should have the capability of doing that, um, in the short term.
Sure.
You know, I mean, there should be metrics on sizes and based on population on firehouse sizes, D P W sizes. I would think available, but I guess we would need a consultant to dig that out. Go ahead, Mary. Um, so.
So I think the, the metrics or the size issue generally was one of the um, questions that was answered by that facilities master plan. Um, and that's kind of the, um, that was kind of the, in the purview of the, um, public works and the board of selectmen, I think, kind of oversaw that public works because their facilities management is their thing. Um, even so, I think that, um, I think at least the programming and the size aspect were one thing that we could kind of take. Um, um, I think we, that generally did provide that. I think what it, that, in my recollection, what that um, program or that plan didn't address is really, um, looking far and wide for sites and then getting any, doing any community input, um, on those. Um, there was some idea that the master plan in the best of worlds, that could have, those could have been married projects, but um, at the time that we were doing the master plan, the facilities plan really wasn't, people didn't have a great deal of, um, confidence that it could go to the next level. There were still a lot of questions, but I think there may be some, I think, I think that I've heard that they, that may, may be revising that and looking to do that over. So I think maybe your wish list, um, Chris and Mary of kind of getting those things figured out is maybe on the, on the boards. But I, and I don't know that it's planning boards funds that it needs to come out of, but I'm guessing it's more from the board of selectmen. They're looking at their funds to do that.
So is that facilities plan available? Is it something you could post on the share plate or something?
You know, I don't, I don't have a digital copy and I think that was maybe intentional. I think that they didn't want it, um, and didn't want it released because I think they didn't really kind of get their approval. Um, it's a final draft. It's like getting a draft from a consultant and you don't really want to put it out there as a, as something you're fully behind. So I think there were enough holes in it that they didn't want it out. I don't have a digital copy of it. Um, so, um, I think you'd have to go to the board of selectmen to ask if, if it's worth reviewing. I, I mean, I, I have a, I have a, I have a, I have a paper copy that I'm happy to share with you. You could, I've, and the one that I have, I think, was not even the, the latest draft. Sarah, did you ever get a copy of them? I know that.
I know I've heard that stuff if I had it, so.
Yeah, and I think there were presentations that may be online that really had the bulk of the information too.
So the, the bigger question is, should?
I'm sorry, Becky's on the phone too. She may have a recollection of this process.
It was before Becky's time.
Oh, was it? Oh, maybe it was.
I'm going, like, eight years ago or so.
No, no, four. I was here. I wasn't here eight years ago.
I don't know.
Maybe there were two.
Um, it was done by a person who was. Like retired police or something. I forget. He, their firm does like police and fire in particular. I don't know. Um, so I think the question is, should, is this a plan? I think it's a planning issue. I'm not sure it's a planning board issue, but it does, it's certainly related to the housing and to playing fields and it is a important issue. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure.
Maybe we, we support it and push it into the board of selectmen and, and, uh.
Can I add to this, Ron?
Go ahead.
The one thing the master plan did was we did flush out, um, I, I don't remember how many meetings we discussed it, but we flushed out at least our hunches as to, uh, the water treatment facility, where, where might it possibly go or what is this possible lifespan and a bunch of different facilities in town we talked about. And there is some sketching done in the master plan. It seems to me, to go further with this, it has to be a project specific effort. You, I don't, uh, for years, we wanted to see a, a facilities master plan done in town because the town was, before the CPC was passed, you know, we were letting Kroll Chapel disintegrate into dust and the water damage on all our buildings. The town was doing no maintenance or anything. Costs were skyrocketed and nobody sat down and said, what are all the buildings we own and what do they state and their condition? And I think that was done quite before the master plan, if I recall correctly. Some, some effort was done in that direction to see what we've got. Um, it, it, any, at any rate, um, to go forward, it seems to me this needs to be like a project-specific thing. If, if the selectmen want to find a new location for a water treatment facility, uh, they have to sort of lead that charge and then, and then that's a separate research effort, et cetera. You know, and that would be true for any other facility. It seems to me you can't just comprehensively do it all without a specific goal in mind.
But I, I mean, you still not to have like a master plan. I mean, I think if you do one after the other, I think they have to all kind of be knitted together at some point. You know, this goes there, where does this go? And you know, it's kind of like a puzzle.
Don't you think, Ron, it needs to be driven by the selectmen? Because there are many.
Yes. Yeah, no, I do, I do agree. It's kind of out of our, uh, but maybe we, you know, have some kind of input to it. You have a representative.
Well, I'm not about to make a motion. I just kind of raised this because you wanted a list of potential projects that we could.
Yeah. No, understood.
And I am happy to plug it in as a capital plan idea. Doesn't mean it has to stay in this department or, but I, it does help to have them on there and it helps for the finance committee to be thinking about them. So, um, I have no idea what the scope could be, but I could do a little research, see what we paid before and see what the next level. So, I think all of those are worth maybe at, at least putting out there in a long-term plan. The master plan actually clearly identifies that, um, um, a long-term plan should be made for public facilities. So we're not veering from the master plan if we put in something like that, even if it's not planning venue, even if it does belong in someone else's budget down the road. It doesn't, doesn't, it's not, it's a, it's a good suggestion, I think.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sue. Anything else? Otherwise, no.
Um, the, we, um, do have some technical assistance funding still in our budget for, um, without, uh, for any zoning changes, um, I believe about ten thousand dollars. And I think we may want in the next two years to put in maybe five thousand dollars additional each of the next two years, which is not very much, but for some, um, technical assistance on zoning changes as we try to work our way through the, the, um, updating of the zoning.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Yeah, Sarah, and I do, I do generally have, um, around five thousand dollars in, um, professional services, which I would always, I could always look to that if it doesn't rise to the level of cap, something. Which I would always, I could always look to that if it doesn't rise to the level of cap, something I need to put in my capital, but I could also. You know, do ten years per year in capital or every other year as well. And that money, I, they've let me carry forward generally too. Are you thinking that I should put five-year, five thousand per year in a capital budget for zoning?
That include the maps?
Yes, the maps. That's the other piece. The maps and, um, so you had, um, you have some carry forward money right now?
Yep, yes, because I, because of, because we wanted to do maps and I wanted to do. Um, yeah, so I've carried some forward from the math, what I had asked for, for master planning, completing master plan. That's, so I have some professional services and it's not earmarked for anything. Particular, but in my mind, um, I've thought about it for, you know, finishing the master plan, making maps.
Don't let them take it away from you, Sue.
Right, well, I think we need to get maps done too. We need, we, we absolutely are gonna need new maps.
Yeah, yeah, and I've, and I've made that inquiry, but I have not heard back from after you. I'm a little disappointed. So I will keep pushing.
Okay, so perhaps our professional service. Uh, is efficient this year, this coming year with. Twenty or more thousand for parking. And then the question is, in the, if you need a. So I, I guess I'd like to see a more robust actual plan that, you know, um. The detail, that has some narrative on these future.
For cap, for capital plan?
Yeah, there, or whatever your budget. But they were really talking about this year, I think.
My budget doesn't have much of a narrative that goes with it. It's salaries, it's five hundred for. Equipment that I carry on or so, so some, a certain amount for postage. Um, I think there was a recommendation to. Carry some more budgets, carry some money in the budget for training. Um, which I think is a great idea.
Professional services arguably could be for training too, right?
Um, yes, although I do have a small budget that I've, that I have for training, but that could be. I mean, it's kind of a. Fluid. I look at it as a fluid, the most fluid of all the, of any of the pots that I have, and it's the only pot above five hundred. Other than salary, so. All of the budgets are very small.
Okay, so if training, let's. So do you have a training light item or not?
I think, I, I think it's labeled. Subscription. And. And, and training or something like that. I, I don't have it in front of me, but I can.
Okay. So if you have some, then let's try to use it for either, let's think about what we want to get trained on.
Yeah, and often in the past, whenever there's a training that I think is irrelevant, I've. Sent something out to the board and said, if you would go to this training, I'd be happy to cover the cost. Of it, so it hasn't been restricted, but I think it's also, we also have an opportunity through various organizations. To have someone come in and do a specific training, um, for example, in writing defensible, um, decisions. Alright, so you could have someone come in and for like as little, I think it's four hundred dollars, you can have them do a training specific to. Um, our board. And I think that is a good use of funds. I think it would probably. Be really helpful. If the board would agree to something like that, I think it would be a great use of funds. Because I honestly, I usually, um, a lot of that does just get turned over and I don't use it.
Okay.
Okay, um, anything else on studies? Otherwise, I'll move to the next item. Which is, uh, subcommittee and liaison reports. And I'll just go first and tell everyone that the CPC project applications. For next year, I do by December eighth. Uh, so if there's any thoughts on, uh, items to projects. A member has in mind, uh, for CPC funding. Um, applications are due on the eighth. Anyone have any other committee reports or liaison reports? Okay, um. Uh, Gail, do we, did we, um, are the, the November eighth minutes, they were, uh, inserted and were ready or not?
They were inserted midday.
Okay, so has, uh, I assume. We'll have to hold off on that till next meeting. I don't think, has anyone had a chance to read them? Okay, so we'll, we'll move that to our next meeting. So the next item I have on the agenda is our schedule for December. So here's some, uh, information for everyone. I, planning on canceling our December twenty-seventh meeting. Our next meeting will be December thirteenth. At that time, um, we will have a presentation on the, uh, restoration of the wall. I think it's ninety-four. Uh, Brewster, uh, Gail, is it? Uh, Bridge Street, ninety-four Bridge Street. Will, uh, we will have that before us, but ahead of that, and Gail has suggested to me, uh, when we met. Uh, that we, uh, s- schedule our site walk meetings. For these type of things, the, uh, Saturday morning at ten AM before. That, that week's meeting with the application. This is sort of in lockstep with what the ZBA does. And so our site walk meetings will be at ten AM on Saturday mornings.
I mean, do we have to do it at ten? I mean, I, I don't know.
We, we, we could do it early. Yes, we, we could do it early. Yes, we could. Uh, it's just that this current one has. I think Gail has already scheduled for ten, but future ones, if no one objects, we can do it at eight AM. Or nine, whatever. I, I, I think I'd like to, you know, maybe decide that when the full board is here. Maybe we'll decide that, uh, next meeting. Although, next meeting, I don't know. Go ahead, yeah.
Ron, did I just point out you're asking, um, you know, professional consultants to show up, so eight might be a little early for some people.
I think you want, people want their day. People want their.
I understand that.
They're the applicant. I feel like, we can.
Oh, okay.
Did you say restoration of the wall? What's that?
Um, yeah, so, uh, Gail, have we distributed that stuff yet? The, uh, for Bridge Street?
No, I understood that usually went out the Wednesday before the meeting. Do you want it before? I'll be happy to put the packets together tomorrow.
Yeah, I would put them in our, uh, our December, uh, fifteenth meeting, um, packet.
I, I also have that in a PDF, so I can forward that to the board tomorrow.
That would be great. I think the board would appreciate earlier the better. So that'll be on our agenda and pretty much the only thing I see on our agenda for next meeting, um. Maybe some things will come up. I don't know, but I know it's getting close. To the holiday season and I don't think, I, I don't know how many people are showing up on the, uh, in the December meeting, I think. Uh, Gary and Laura, I don't think are coming, but I don't know. Is everyone else planning on coming?
I have another meeting that starts at seven, so maybe I could come six-thirty to seven-thirty. Just put the difference.
The, the date of that meeting is the thirteenth?
Uh, yes, December thirteenth.
Yeah, I'm not, unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of town.
I think everybody's out of town. I think we talked about the sixth instead.
We did, but, uh, I think Gail spoke to the applicant and I think the thirteenth was set.
I think it was a matter of they could not, we could not, you could not get in the, the legal notices for the. The two consecutive weeks.
That's right.
To make the December sixth work.
So how many, how many of, of the five of us can show up on the thirteenth?
I, I have the other meeting, but I can just be here if I need to.
So Sarah and myself, Mary?
I can be here, yep.
Because maybe, if it's a Zoom meeting, I might be able to turn in.
It will be a Zoom meeting.
All right, sounds like, keep it the thirteenth.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, there's a good chance we'll have four. I think Christina can make it, Mary. Um, you know, her schedule or was it? I thought it was maybe Laura. I, I, I'm kind of.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think we'll have four.
Ron, what's the rush? Um, if the applicant doesn't mind, just push it forward.
I, I suggested that, uh, actually.
The applicant has, does actually mind. They've been trying to get in for some time. Sorry to speak out of turn, but.
Yeah, no, Gary, I, I was the first thing I tried to do was push it all off to January and, uh. It was a roadblock, so I.
In fact, the applicant withdrew without prejudice and then applied again so that you could get it done within. Sixty-five days. Um, and Gail, is there, do we anticipate that the, um, the curb cut will be coming in? In the next couple of weeks?
What curb cut?
I think she, um.
For, Forster, is that? Tim Collins just came before ZBA for, um, splitting his lot. And now he needs a curb cut for the new lot. So that's what it is.
Well, it won't be till January. Right, at least.
We haven't received the application yet, so. And I haven't spoken to him, so I'll let him know that it could be on January tenth. How's that?
Uh, yeah, he'll need to, he'll need to know what date it will be on. I don't know if you have a January schedule, but.
Yeah, he needs to finish his butter's lift before he can even apply.
All right, so, um, that's the story on that. I'll, uh, we'll send out reminder emails on the site walk. And, and, and try to poll the absent members on their schedule for that meeting. Um, on other matters. I just wanted to let the board know that at town meeting I ran into, uh, Celia Vitas Dorf. And she's, uh, diligently working on the report that we were all interviewed with, or at least most of us, and. She expects to appear and have the results of our board either at our January tenth or twenty-fourth meeting. So, uh, stay tuned for that. Um, and then Gail or Sue, if you just want to comment on the, uh, hybrid meetings. I think the plan is to start those at the beginning of the year. Um, which will be, mean the board will, uh, meet in the town hall. Uh, there is a. A training that needs to go on between administrative and I think myself. Maybe you, Sarah, also on, um, how the equipment works. So stay tuned. We might be back face-to-face next year. So those are the two announcements I have. Any, did I, am I mistaken on either, either that, Gail, or Sue, you went to a meeting on that? If I'm correct.
I think that, I think that's right, and I just want to reiterate, um, it's up to the board whether they want to meet. Zoom or hybrid, but if they choose to meet hybrid. Or in person in town hall, then all of the members have to be in town hall, so. You can't split up and some members do Zoom and some members be, um, in town hall, so. It's either you're all there, um, or it's all Zoom. And the only other people that can be in town hall would be a consultant. Um, or a consultant's representative. Um, but all members of the public would, for now, will be, um, um, virtual.
So I'd like to poll the full board on, on the desires on whether to meet in town or continue on Zoom. So, um, think about that. What you prefer.
Yeah, the, the only, the, that is, that's a matter of state law. That the board needs to be either on Zoom or in town hall. All the full board.
Thanks, Gail. Yeah, that's not a policy and that's not a town's policy.
Yeah, we didn't make it up.
I prefer Zoom personally.
Well. We'll take a, um, a vote and, uh. Maybe we stay, uh, stay on Zoom. Up to the board. So, okay, that's.
Tonight, do we?
No, we do not. I, I thought I would decide it with, well, seven members present. I think that's. That would be fair. I wouldn't want to not give someone the opportunity, so. Okay, so that's all I have. Um, anybody have anything else? Other than that, I would vote to close the meeting, but I do, before that, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving to your families and yourselves. We, we've worked hard this year. Uh, we made it through a pretty successful town meeting with the recodification. We're on our way. Um, I think we're gonna hit the ground running again, um. In January on recodification, we'll start to tackle a little bit, uh, how we're gonna handle this and a little harder things and. How we're gonna engage Babrowski with the remaining funds or someone else. And, um, so we look forward to that in the new year and, uh. Again, happy Thanksgiving and, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. And happy Thanksgiving to you, Ron.
Thank you all. Uh, okay, motion to adjourn has been moved. It's seconded, Ms. Creighton.
Uh, I.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Gobble gobble, yes.
Mr. Olley?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you in December and then. In the new year. Most of you, I hope, we see in December.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.